Okay, Joe. I know how to get Joe's attention. He's standing right there with his back to you. This meeting of the Carrollton Farms Branch ISD Board of Trustees is called to order at 7:01 PM on May the 5th, 2016. At this time, please join me in standing as Richard Fleming leads the board's opening prayer and remain standing as John Matthew leads the pledge to the Texas and US flag.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings and gifts that you continue to bestow upon our district, continue to bless schoolteachers, students, and staff, and please help us finish this year on a very strong note. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. As a district, we dedicate all of our effort and resources to our goal of high achievement for all of our students, and the board uses this goal in all of our deliberation decisions and actions. You will get to see all deliberation decisions and actions of the board, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in closed session, which is government code section 551. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with attorney, and real estate. For the record, all board trustees are here, and we do constitute a quorum and can conduct business on behalf of the school district. Also, as required by board policy, BBD local, Ms. Grivner, let the minutes reflect that there are no members deficient in receiving the continuing education training hours required for 2016. At this time, we will now proceed to Agenda Item Two, and I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Good. Members of the board, audience, thank you for being here tonight. Cinco de Mayo. Welcome, everyone. We begin each board meeting this year talking about student achievement, and so we've been doing a presentation around the book Twenty One Trends for the Twenty First Century. And before I turn it over to Ms. Warnock, I'm going to draw your attention to a quote that hangs on that door out there if you came in, that door. And it's from Aristotle, and it says, "It is the mark of an educated mind to be able to entertain a thought without accepting it." It provides the context for tonight's presentation on student achievement around polarization. Ms. Warnock.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. As Dr. Burns mentioned, as the board has been studying Twenty One Trends for the Twenty First Century, Gary Marx's text, it gives us great pause to think about issues and implications for our work in schools. And tonight, we're going to be looking at Chapter Fifteen on polarization, which begins with the sentence, "Don't confuse me with the facts. My mind is already made up." Grouping people around two extremes can produce an entertaining television program. However, in the real world, the lack of willingness or ability to reasonably discuss, deliberate, and debate serious issues can lead to constant conflict, gridlock, acts of terror, and even war. Reliability is undermined, evidence is ignored, reasonable alternatives never see the light of day, and progress suffers potentially fatal wounds. When an organization, community, or country cannot address important concerns because it is chronically fractionated, problems remain unsolved; then they intensify. Key ideas don't make the agenda and become drowning victims in a sea of narrowness. When feuding factions and unending contentious battles take precedence over progress, communities and nations fall behind. We now live in a collaborative, lateral, networked world connected 24/7. So what's at stake? Marx writes, "It's civility." A major driver of education is a commitment to get students ready to become engaged, contributing members of a civil society. That should mean they understand the importance of reasoned discussion, they know how to gather, consider, and present evidence, and they have some commitment to comprehending Okay, you're going to stay standing, and we want you with your partner that you've but not necessarily accepting a variety of points of view. been talking with to make one of you Partner A and one of you Partner B. So appropriate that Dr. Burns highlighted the quote that hangs outside of our boardroom So Partner A, raise your hand if you're Partner A. Raise your hand. door. Let me see all the Partner As, okay? It is the mark of an educated mind to be able to entertain a thought without accepting If you're Partner B, I want you to raise your hand then if you're Partner B. it. So we know that kinesthetic learning is good for everyone, and we always want to model Okay. So this next quotation up here from Mahatma Gandhi, "The honest disagreement is often good instructional practice at our student achievement presentations. a good sign of progress." So we're going to ask the audience to stand if you agree with this quote. So as we build flexible thinkers, we want to be able to think about what we agree with and what we might disagree with. We'll ask our board to participate, too. So Partner A, you're going to have 20 seconds to share with Partner B what you agree with So if you agree with this quotation, if you'll stand up.
This question.
This quote. And, well, I'll stand, but then I can't hear. about this quotation. Then Partner B, you're going to disagree. Okay, you're going to disagree respectfully, so I want you to be thinking about why you So we want you to turn and talk to your neighbor. might argue against it, even if you internally agree this is how we build flexible thinking. We're going to put 30 seconds on the clock, and so we want you to talk about, you know, So I'm going to give you a few seconds to think, and then we'll put 20 seconds for Partner what this quote means to you, why you agree with it.
Okay.
A to share why you agree, and 20 seconds for Partner B to share why you disagree.
Okay.
I agree with it.
Partner A, it's your turn. Go.
I disagree with it. I don't agree with it. I don't like it. And if I was to respond? Well, but, yeah.
All right, stop. Your 20 seconds is up. So now it is Partner B's turn. Partner B, you have 20 seconds of why you would disagree. Ready? Partner B, it's your turn to talk. Go.
Honest and dishonest, doesn't promote progress. There we go. I had it really on my list that night, Tuesday night, and I just said, "Thank you." They were really on me.
Oh, yeah. And you don't agree with it.
All right, thank you.
You can say thank you to your partner and be seated.
Very good.
Now, in a classroom discussion, if we were participating in this, we might have students writing. We would definitely have more time to think and maybe different texts that we'd be talking about. But what we just engaged in is accountable talk. And accountable talk is a practice that we believe in in CFB that helps to build civil discourse and combat the polarization that Gary Marx described. So what is accountable talk? Accountable talk is taught by teachers and students about academically important content that supports student reasoning and their ability to communicate their thinking. And when we use the word accountable, it means that we're accountable to the classroom community as a whole, to each other as learners, to rigorous thinking, and to content knowledge. Some students come with great, already built-in knowledge of how to have accountable talk, and others have to have more explicit teaching in what those conversation moves look like. At campuses and classrooms all over the district, you'll see norms for classroom discussion that are posted and reviewed with students to help build practices around civil discourse and how we engage in that in our classrooms, that we hear our voices, that we say something meaningful, we listen with intent, that we're flexible in our thinking. As we teach these talk moves explicitly, the purpose is that we are able to share, expand, and clarify thinking, listen carefully, dig deeper into reasoning, to think with and through others, ultimately to build a civil discourse and give our students the tools to take that civil discourse into the world of work and their future. We have four talk moves that we focus on in CFB: restate, elaborate, agree/disagree, and justify. And for the purpose of time, we'll just look at one example tonight. With agree/disagree, I would be teaching my students in the classroom that that means that I would grant consent or to accede, or dissenting from another's opinion, or I might have an alternate view about an idea, fact, or opinion. And if that was a circumstance in a discussion, that these might be some moves that I would use. We train our staff on frames for prompting. So if we're engaged in a discourse and I want to elicit more student talk, because what we know is that he who does the talking does the learning. So if I want to have students talking, more teachers can rely on some of the frames for prompting that would be on the left. And for students, you'll see in student binders on student desks or posted in classrooms, the sentence starters to help students find the language to engage in civil discourse, especially in our elementary years as we're beginning to understand how to have those kinds of dialogues. So to see this in action, we're going to take a look at several classrooms at Davis Elementary.
We already reviewed the do's and don'ts of our discussion, so I want you to have that in mind. Be mindful about tracking your speaker. Be mindful about elaborating your conversations and being as respectful as you can be. Remember to use your kind words. Remember to say, "Can I elaborate with what you're saying? I disagree with you because..." "I don't disagree with you because..." Okay? I want to hear complete sentences in your discussions and deep thoughts.
So then later when he left, the servant left, they were, they can step out so he can at least try to repair it, but he didn't.
Wait, humor the servant the same way he used to humor his own father.
Because it says that every time that his father is fixing something, he wanted him to be on his side every time.
Magpie?
Magpie, I don't think he's the main character because, like, he's the one who caused the trouble. Like, he said, "I'm ready." Like, whenever Fox was telling him, "Okay, come with me, come with me, come with me," and then, and then, like, he was trying, he was trying to, he was trying to tell, to, like, trying to take her somewhere, and then, and then, he's the one who caused the trouble because he's like, he said, like, "I'm ready to go."
I disagree with you because the one who caused the problem is Fox because...
Well, both of them caused the problem.
No, but...
Actually, no, more Fox.
Yeah.
Because he's the one that kept asking.
Well, yeah.
But the Fourteenth Amendment made it where they can be in the military or in office.
They got, like, they weren't as restricted when they were slaves once the Fourteenth Amendment was put out. Like, they got, what did I say? They got room, and they weren't restricted to, like, their former lives. They could do more stuff, but they were still restricted to some rules.
They don't have restricted lives anymore, just a little maybe, but I don't know. But I notice that they're mixing colors because the blacks is with the whites. So I think that's how they're treating their context.
They're giving us, so why are we treating them like they're less...
That it is equal, like, everybody, not, because before, like, everybody said that they had limited rights, but now they have equal.
The question is, do you claim that human actions have more positive impact on our ecosystems, or do you claim that human actions have a more negative impact on our ecosystems?
Because that's not all of the things that we, that there's in the whole world that could happen. Maybe we can discover more things that we could do to save the animals and the trees and the plants.
Well, if there was less negative, there wouldn't even be a global.
I disagree with you because that's not all of the things that we, that there's in the whole world that could happen. Maybe we can discover more things that we could do to save the animals and the trees and the...
Remember, student talk, not teacher talk. Here, I'd please start.
I will count by tens, six, eight, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty.
Um, it's like counting by twos, but you put a zero on it.
Exactly. So can we count by twenties now? Now that we know how to count by twos?
Count by...
So you can see from these examples of students using talk and promoting civil discourse in classrooms, we think that, you know, some of our national stage officials could learn from our students at Davis Elementary about promoting civil discourse. We know that our future will be in bright hands because of the citizenship skills that students are learning through academic talk. So that concludes our presentation for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Warnock. Board members, any comments, questions?
Board members. I believe we do not have any questions. Ms. Warnock, thank you for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
We will now move on to Agenda... Next to Agenda Item is Item Three, which is recognition of special guest and announcement. Back to you, Dr. Burns.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Good. And members of the board and audience, we're going to go from talking about achievement to showing you students with extremely high achievement. So we're going to begin with our National Merit Award recipients, and I believe Professor Pouncy is going to enlighten us on how significant that achievement is. So, Mr. Pouncy, and Mr. Good, will you join me in the front?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Dr. Burns, members of the board. We're so glad to be here this afternoon. PSAT. Each year, about 1.4 million students in over 22,000 high schools, and there are about 30,000 high schools in the United States, they enter the Competitive National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the PSAT in their junior year. And from that number, about 34,000 high scores on the test are named commended scholars. And this is also based on the selection index score that varies state to state. And from that number, about 16,000 of the high scores represent about 1% of the nation's high school graduating seniors qualify as National Merit semifinalists. Now, semifinalists are able to continue in the competition for merit scholarships. From the 1.4 million test takers and 16,000 semifinalists, about 15,000 high scores are selected as National Merit finalists. National Merit finalists must meet keen academic requirements to continue in the competition. And from that number, about 7,600 students are selected as merit scholarship winners. And we have one at Smith this afternoon as well. You can go ahead. All right, all right, let's not get carried away. Also, each year, the National Hispanic Recognition Program recognizes about 5,000 of the approximately 250,000 Hispanic/Latino students who took the PSAT exam in their junior year. Now, these students are the students who score in the top 2.5% among all Hispanic/Latino test takers and are considered top college prospects. So students, when I call your names, will you kindly come to the front? And we're going to ask parents to stand as well. Our National Hispanic Recognition Program scholar is Yacentis, pardon me, Yacentis Coy. And Ms. Coy, I know you well, and I didn't misspronounce the name. It's Yacelis Coy. Now, Yacelis planned to attend the University of North Texas and major in French Education and History. She is involved in dance, French club, Honor Society, Global Summit, and National Honor Society. Ms. Coy. Our commended scholars are Masumi Yoshimoto. His parents are here with him, Mrs. and Mrs. Yoshimoto. Kishiro and Tomoki Yoshimoto, is he here?
Yeah.
Oh, is she here? There, go up there, please. Ms. Yoshimoto. Ms. Yoshimoto is involved in Ballet Ensemble of Texas, the Ballet Ensemble, pardon me, the Ballet Academy of Texas, and she's involved in Asian Culture Club, International Business Academy, National Honor Society. She will attend the University of Texas at Austin to major in nutrition. Thank you. Parents are Mary and Kevin Stahl. He's involved in the marching band, Mu Alpha Theta, that's the National Honor Society. National Honor Society will attend the University of Texas at Austin to major in electrical engineering. Mr. Stahl. Benjamin Fang. Parents are Meiling Fang and Serena Song. He's here. He may not be here. Well, he's involved in basketball. He will attend the University of Texas at Dallas and major in mechanical engineering. We have Tana Oplinger. Parents are Tony Oplinger, Ann Oplinger, and Kristy Marceau. Senior Class Executive Committee, National Honor Society, National French Honor Society, French Club, Human Rights Forum, Connect Teach, will attend SMU. I love that. Will attend Southern Methodist University and major in Human Rights and International Studies. Ms. Tana Oplinger. Nicholas Morgan. Parents are David and Shirley. Okay, he's with our other student. Anyway, Nick's involved in band, Boy Scouts of America. He's an Eagle Scout, and he will attend Brookhaven College and major in creative writing. Brian Ho, Brian, he's with the other two. Very busy schedule. With Brian, parents are DeWitt Lee and Twin Ho, and he's in band and Mu Alpha Theta and loves to eat food and... He's going to go to the University of Texas, Austin, and major in pharmacy to help him with that food. Catherine Hickcock, Catherine Hickcock. Parents are Scott and Margaret. Student Body President, CFB Student Ambassador, National Honor Society, Orchestra President, Newman Smith CIC Committee, DECA, National Technical Honor Society, International Business Academy, will attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in electrical and computer engineering. Now, National Merit finalist, who is now a National Merit Scholarship winner, is Mindy Chi. Is Mindy here? Thank you, Mindy. Come on up. Parents are Rick Chi and Li Ling Shon. Debate, Texas Floridians League, state qualifier, Asian Club, Human Rights Forum, Computer Science, Science UIL Regional State Qualifier, Japanese Club. She will attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in computer engineering, computer science. Please welcome our national scholars. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, members of the board. I am Brooke Perselli. I serve as the principal of RL Turner High School, and I'm excited to recognize our National Merit Award recipients tonight. We will start with our National Hispanic Recognition Program scholars. The first is Giovanni Briones. Giovanni attended DeWitt Perry Middle School. He plans to attend Hofstra University in the fall and major in performing arts. Our second Hispanic recognition scholar is Alejandro Mestanza. Alejandro could not be with us tonight, but he is the son of Rolando and Rosario Mestanza. He attended Country Place and McCoy Elementary and DeWitt Perry Middle School. Alejandro plans to attend the University of Texas at Dallas and major in computer science. We have two National Merit commended scholars to recognize tonight. The first is Miles Alsop Shiner. Miles is the son of Leslie Alsop and David Shiner. He will attend Wesleyan University in Connecticut in the fall with plans to major in mathematics. We also have two National Merit finalists to recognize tonight from RL Turner. The first is Sophie Geisel. Sophie is the daughter of Anne Marie Kearney. She attended DeWitt Perry Middle School. She will attend Loyola Marymount University in the fall with plans to major in film and television production. And our final National Merit finalist tonight is Andrew Pernotti. Andrew could not be with us tonight. He is the son of Miranda Pernotti. Andrew will attend Texas A&amp;M University this fall with plans to major in electrical engineering.
Let me introduce you again, Mr. Pouncy. Students, obviously, you didn't get here alone, right? You had lots of help, your parents, other relatives, other friends, but you also had some special teachers. Tonight, in our board meeting, we recognize what we call our VIPs, very important professionals, the teachers who make a difference for you so that your achievement will be what it is. And we're going to start with Mr. Pouncy's first, but before we start, VIPs, we can never thank you enough. That doesn't mean we're not going to try, okay? So in your bags, there's some written thank you notes, okay, to tell you how much we appreciate all the work that you do for our students. There's also some other things in there, I think, that you're going to enjoy as well, compliments of Brookhaven Country Club, some meals, some golf, some different things to show their appreciation to you well as a part of our, being a business partner for us. So congratulations to all our VIPs. Mr. Pouncy? You're up.
Thank you. Ms. Good, members of the board, again, I'm Joe Pouncy, Principal at Newman Smith. I would like for you to welcome our VIP, Mr. David Hardy. For over three decades, David Hardy has set the standard...
Our second National Commended Scholar is Brian Katter, who cannot be with us tonight. Brian is the son of David and Kim Katter. He attended Ferno Elementary and Dan F. Long Middle School. Brian will attend Texas Tech University this fall with plans to major in Engineering. We also have two National Merit Finalists to recognize tonight from RL Turner. The first is Sophie Geisel. Sophie is the daughter of Anne Marie Kearney. She attended DeWitt Perry Middle School. She will attend Loyola Marymount University in the fall with plans to major in Film and Television Production. And our final National Merit Finalist tonight is Andrew Pernotti. Andrew could not be with us tonight. He is the son of Miranda Pernotti. Andrew will attend Texas A&amp;M University this fall with plans to major in Electrical Engineering.
Let me introduce you again, Mr. Pouncy. Students, obviously you didn't get here alone, right? You had lots of help, your parents, other relatives, other friends, but you also had some special teachers. Tonight, in our board meeting, we recognize what we call our VIPs, very important professionals. The teachers who make a difference for you so that your achievement will be what it is. And we're gonna start with Mr. Pouncy's first, but before we start, VIPs, we can never thank you enough. That doesn't mean we're not gonna try, okay? So in your bags, there's some written thank you notes, okay, to tell you how much we appreciate all the work that you do for our students. There's also some other things in there, I think, that you're gonna enjoy as well. Compliments of Brookhaven Country Club, some meals, some golf, some different things to show their appreciation to you well as a part of our, being a business partner for us. So congratulations to all our VIPs. Mr. Pouncy?
Thank you.
You're up.
Mr. Goode, members of the board, again, I'm Joe Pouncy, Principal at Newman Smith. I would like for you to welcome our VIP, Mr. David Hardy. For over three decades, David Hardy has set the standard for quality instruction at Newman Smith High School. Mr. Hardy came to Newman Smith in the early 1980s with a degree from Oral Roberts University and later the University of Kansas. He quickly earned a reputation as one of the most skillful French teachers in North Texas. His former students number in the hundreds, and many will say that they owe their success to Mr. David Hardy. There are many factors that set David Hardy apart from his peers. His skill as a French teacher are unparalleled. His creativity in transforming the average student into someone with an extraordinary command of the French language is amazing. His low-key approach, grit, creativity, determination to provide instruction at the highest level is a model for us all to follow. However, the single most important factor that set David Hardy apart from his peers is his ability to teach all students. His interpersonal skills and passion for teaching and learning are priceless. It's amazing to see the transformation in his students when they enter his classes. For example, a few years ago, one of his students, while traveling with the Newman Smith group in France, gave a live interview over French national television regarding the school's home state program. The student's French was outstanding, it was pretty amazing. They sent me a clip back here and I couldn't believe it. His former students are living testaments to his, to the influence that he exerted on them, and they are very successful at the post-secondary level and in various professions. Now, his current students are among the best in the country, and his students also compete well in various competitions, the North Texas French Competition, for example, they just shine in that competition. Travel, video conferences, and a unique home state program Mr. Hardy initiated 10 years ago have transformed the lives of hundreds, not just in Carrollton, but worldwide. His home state program is a powerful enrichment tool that allows students to travel to the Normandy region of France to briefly live with students in the town of Alisson. Likewise, the students from the Normandy region reciprocate by coming to Carrollton to stay with our students. Cyril Dusant from the Normandy region has worked with Mr. David Hardy for over 10 years. Here's what Cyril had to say. He said that, "I teach English in a French school in Normandy and would like to thank Mr. Hardy for the huge impact his exchange program has had on the lives of my French students. We started exchanging in 2002, using video conferences, first hosted by Mr. Hardy, student in France, in 2005. We visited them in 2006 at Newman Smith High School and have regularly continued exchanging since then. I am convinced that the participants in this program would benefit from the experiences for the rest of their lives. I watch students return to France with increased levels of motivation, self-confidence, flexibility, and a deeper understanding of the United States. Besides, when leaving our school, many students say that this exchange program has been the most significant enjoyable time in their education. As a colleague, Mr. Hardy has motivated and inspired me with his genuine enthusiasm for his work, his real desire to make sure his students learn something. He is an outstanding, passionate, creative educator who challenges and supports his students every day. Thank you a thousand times, David, for the countless hours and boundless energy you put into the exchange program all these years." And he also said, "Merci, your friend from Normandy, Cyril Dusant." Likewise, we would like to say, "Merci." Thank you, much obliged, a thousand times to you, David Hardy, for serving the students at Newman Smith High School and CLB. Now, David and his wife, Janice, have two daughters, Danielle and Angela. And I think Danielle, they're here? Janice, are they, Angela's here? Okay, and Angela's there, she's a teacher at Newman Smith. Glad to have her. Please welcome our VIP, Mr. David Hardy.
Good evening again, Dr. Burns, members of the board. It is my pleasure tonight to honor RL Turner's newest member of the very important profession of teaching, Mr. Billy Macklin. Billy has been teaching and coaching at RL Turner for the past eight years. He is our head men's basketball coach and our department manager for the PE and Athletics Department. Billy is married to Diana, whom he describes as an amazing wife. Their son Kane keeps them busy following in his dad's footsteps, playing baseball and basketball. When I asked Billy what inspired him to become a teacher and a coach, he told me about Coach Hall. He said, "It wasn't until high school that I realized how much of an impact sports could have on education. Coach Hall was my Algebra II teacher and he had me placed in his honors class. Knowing my struggle with this subject, Coach Hall would have me come in every morning before school to check my homework and have me work problems that I missed over and over. He would do this until I grasped whatever concept was being covered. At track meets, he would call me over and randomly ask some type of question dealing with algebra. The more time I spent with him, the more I started visioning what I wanted to do with the rest of my life. Now, every day my goal is to give back what Coach Hall gave me: confidence, drive, and encouragement. Through basketball coaching and our Partners PE Program, Billy has found a means to accomplish that goal in a way that would make Coach Hall proud. In 2012, one of Coach Macklin's varsity basketball players, Irving Martinez, was also a teaching intern in Mary Mahaffey's Special Education class. Through the example of character and service that he saw in his coach and his experience in the applied academics classroom, Irving became passionate about supporting the Special Education students, both as individuals and as athletes. Irving believed that these athletes were worthy of the same recognition as their non-disabled peers, and Coach Macklin agreed. Thus was born and now annual tradition of Casey's Run Night at the annual Turner-Smith Basketball Game. Players from both teams wear Casey's Kids t-shirts over their uniforms during warm-up, and they meet at center court before the game begins to place donations in a bucket, which is then passed into the stands to raise money for Special Olympics. Thus began a relationship between some of our school's most gifted athletes and some of our school's most courageous athletes. Billy incorporates the same positive and generous spirit that characterizes his basketball program into the supportive environment of his adaptive PE classes. The program pairs general education students with special education students in their PE classes. The program started small in 2010 with just 10 students and 12 partners, but has since grown into three PE classes with 54 partners, working alongside 20 Special Education students. Billy actively recruits potential partners each spring during course registration, and word of Partners PE has spread over the years, and now students seek out recommendations to be a part of this special PE program. The curriculum is centered around skills in basketball, volleyball, badminton, lifelong physical fitness skills, but what Billy is also teaching is character, kindness, empathy, generosity of spirit. He's really teaching the importance of inclusion and the value of friendship. Junior Annika Catlett is a partner in third period, and she says, "I've never seen Coach Macklin in a bad mood. He's always smiling and talkative and nice to be around." Senior Anthony Barrientas said, "At first I didn't want to be in regular PE, so I applied for Partners PE. But now I realize it has been a life-changing experience for me. There are things I took for granted that I don't after being in Partners PE. I disrespected my mom because I hated my life and I hated when she wouldn't let me do what I wanted to do. I've learned to appreciate what I have. I'm thankful that I took this class because I've learned a lot of life lessons. Everyone should take that class. To see Coach Macklin teach is inspiring. You see him putting in all of the effort to help his students. He's 100% up and ready all of the time. Seeing Coach Macklin do it, I know I can help and I want to help. He's coaching all of us every day." Billy's colleagues believe he is special as well. Mary Mahaffey shares, "Irving was the first student to emulate what he saw in his coach. He saw how Billy led by example and he wanted to do the same, and everything has grown from there. Billy will downplay his role whenever he can, so make sure you tell him thank you as many times as you can while he's standing up there with Dr. Burns." So Billy, to you, we say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you." Thank you on behalf of the students and their families whose lives you have touched as their teacher, coach, mentor, and role model. It is my honor tonight to name you as RL Turner's newest member of the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, members of the board, guests, and colleagues. I am Michael Arriola, and I have the honor of serving as the Principal of Early College High School at Brookhaven College. Tonight, on behalf of the students and staff of Early College High School, I'd like to recognize Ms. Chauncey Stafford as our 2015-16 VIP. Ms. Stafford currently teaches Biology, Chemistry, and Anatomy and Physiology at Early College High School. As the head of our Science Department, she has consistently exemplified the values of an early college teacher. She is flexible, hardworking, driven, and extremely invested in the lives of her students. Ms. Stafford brings a flair to her classroom that is rarely seen. While Ms. Stafford is a phenomenal teacher, it is her many other traits that make her a VIP. Her students let us in on a lot of her secret talents. Ms. Stafford is an amazing DJ, professional roaster, she can really bust a move, and she can make a notebook quadruple in size in a matter of days. She's a school mom, a shoulder to cry on, and a voice of reason when everything is falling apart. Ms. Stafford is well-known at ECHS for being a relentless advocate for her students. Every child at ECHS is one of Ms. Stafford's children. One student said, "Back when I was a child," freshman year, "I was a bit intimidated by your presence, but that's how every student will view you, because you motivate and push us, because you know we can do better than what we do. Your teaching has made an impact on me that will be forever drilled into my head." Another wrote, "You are so amazing and talented. I'm so glad to have you as my biology teacher. When I wasn't doing well, you never gave up on me, and that's something that I consider very inspirational." Another wrote, "Ms. Stafford has such a fun and engaging class. I've never been so excited to learn science. YouAreTheBomb.com." Another made a list of reasons why Ms. Stafford deserves a VIP. Number one, your attitude and the excitement that you give off. Number two, the way you carry yourself. Number three, you make such a boring topic interesting. And number four, you're just an amazing person. Ms. Stafford is a principal's dream. She expects her students to succeed at the highest levels. She's relentless in helping them meet those expectations, and she strives to be the best teacher that she can possibly be every day. It is my great honor to recognize Ms. Chauncey Stafford as our 2016 VIP.
We have one final recognition tonight, and what a way to end tonight's recognition, with one of what we believe is our special things that we do in our school district, and that is Casey's Run. And so, I'm not gonna steal any thunder here from our students, so I'm gonna call up our Student Committee to tell us a little bit about Casey's Run. Are we showing the video first? Casey Student Committee? Casey's Run Student Committee? You ready? All right. Because I can talk on and on if you guys don't.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, members of the school board, Associate and Assistant Superintendent. My name is Juan Barrientas. I am a senior at RL Turner High School, and I am here to recognize the remarkable success of Casey's Run 2016. Almost every successful person begins with two beliefs: "The future can be better than the present, I have the power to make it so." Please allow me to begin with a brief explanation of why I am standing before you this evening. When I was in elementary school, I was diagnosed with cancer in the form of an eye tumor. A long and difficult fight to survive taught me life lessons that no child should have to learn. Many dark days of feeling different and left out would have had a destructive impact on my life, but I chose to believe that my life would be better. As a survivor, I look at the world differently than most teens my age. I look beyond the surface of most people to see the beauty in and in the circumstances, which is why Casey's Run is so significant to me. I see the Special Olympic athletes for who they truly are. Kids just like me, I see past their disability and recognize their tremendous abilities, the ability to laugh, to learn, to experience life. I see the only difference between who I am and who they are is how we interact with the world around us. The All-Stars rely on people like you and me to help them in the world and enjoy all that it can offer. This realization and belief in my power to make the world better lead me in important choice I made my sophomore year at Turner. At this time, I had the opportunity to participate in the Partners PE Program. This unique reverse inclusion setting places typical students like me into adaptive PE class with our non-typical peers. I as the partner was tasked with helping my buddy master IEP goals. Besides the daily interaction in the setting, I was also able to help my partner prepare to participate in their Special Olympic events at bowling and track and field. In addition to the great joy that I witnessed in this class and with my partner throughout the year, I acknowledged that my role in my partner's life was giving them a moment to feel exactly what every high school student seeks, to be accepted and valued by a friend. As my senior year began, I had the opportunity to participate in the Partner PE Program, and in choosing to do so, I also accepted an invitation to be a student coordinator for Casey's Run. Early on, I came to understand that the purpose of Casey's Run and my purpose for being a PE partner was one and the same, where I see my partner and the All-Star athlete as able to and deserving of experiencing life just like me. Casey's Run afforded them this opportunity. Where my physical presence is assist is my partner, the All-Star athlete needs to be successful as a complete athletic endeavor. Casey's Run provides the funds to get them there, where my life is changed knowing their life is fuller and richer after being recognized for their achievements with a leather jacket. Casey's Run gifts them with a jacket which looks and feels just like every other leather jacket at our campus, where I give of myself in time and friendship to the All-Star athletes. Casey's Run is the platform for others to rise up and join me. My experience, although it's unique, is not alone. As I mentioned before, I am one of the 19 student coordinators for Casey's Run 2016. We represent each of the five high schools: Creekview, Early College, Newman Smith, Frenchview, and RL Turner. Each of us bringing our unique strengths, we come together with one purpose in mind: to give of ourselves for all the star Special Olympic athletes. Now, if I need to watch this video, which shares more about the Casey's Run has had on us.
What I gained from this experience was but taking a little time to help someone or something to make a change. You're always appreciated for what you do. My favorite moment was watching the hundreds of runners take off, seeing them lay the starting line at the sound of the horn, keeping great feelings in my heart, knowing that we put this together. My favorite moment was when I saw an All-Star athlete cross the finish line with his family. It was an amazing feeling, knowing our hard work is for kids like him. My friends sitting next to me in the pound water had tears in their eyes. My favorite moment was the days that rained, seeing everyone who runs and supports Casey's Run, seeing Casey's family and friends still come out after all these years. Run, seeing Casey's family and friends still come out after all these years. I gained that it is refreshing to do work that has a more authentic reward, knowing that I did something to make people smile and gave them the opportunity to be different. It was humbling and rejuvenating. I really liked meeting new people and getting to see these people do great work and succeed in their leadership roles. It was kind of reassuring to see all the good and people in this world that come together for such a great cause, and the walkie-talkies were really fun. I just wish I could have been a part of this all the time. I loved seeing all the work come together and being very impressive and smiling. This experience really opened my eyes to helping others. I loved it. It warms my heart being a part of it. I have gained such a unique perspective on life and getting back.
We, as the student coordinators, are only one part of the bigger story of Casey's Run. Paralleling our work are campus liaisons who raise awareness and promote our run all across the district. Their efforts helped increase participation again this year, ending with a record 1,309 registered runners on race day. To each of our campus liaisons, we express our deep appreciation for going above and beyond for Casey's Run and our All-Stars. And still another and even greater part of Casey's Run's story is the generously overwhelming support of Casey, family of Casey's Breckus, Candy and Mel, who raise up each year for Casey, for us as the student coordinators, and for all Our-Stars. They give from a place of love, and they begive without seizing so that this event, which breeds so much good and bears their precious daughter's name, can continue to thrive. To Candy and Mel, who allow us to be Casey's hands and feet, we thank you. We thank you for believing all the goods that Casey's Run does for the CFB ISD family. Our student and staff, we thank you for making the most extraordinary gift of Casey's Run 2016 possible. Now, it is my great honor to join my fellow student coordinators, Candy and Mel, as we present our CFB ISD All-Star Special Olympic athletes with a check in the amount of $42,500. On behalf of each and every person...
On behalf of CFB ISD Board of Trustees and Superintendent Dr. Bobby Burns, we want to recognize a very special individual this evening. This is an important year for Casey's Run, as it marks the 10-year anniversary of the inspiration, coordination, and leadership of Mary Mahaffey. We'd like Ms. Mahaffey to come forward. Over the past 10 years, Casey's Run has raised thousands of dollars for CFB ISD Special Olympics athletes and programs. Equally important, this effort has motivated countless student and staff volunteers to dedicate their lives in service to others. Mary Mahaffey has served in CFB as a special education teacher at R.L. Turner for 11 years. She was a friend and mentor to Casey Breckus when they were students at Turner. Candy Breckus, Casey's mom, says it best. This is a letter we received from Candy Breckus about Mary, and Candy has requested that we read this tonight. Mary, there are not enough words to describe the experience of Casey's Run with you the past 10 years. But you know me, and my words, and I'm going to come up with as many as I can. From the day I walked into Special Olympics bowling, saw you standing there and exclaimed, "Mary Mahaffey, what are you doing here?" It has been pure joy to have you as the heart and soul of Casey's Run. This is a very special year for Casey's Run, as it marks the 10-year anniversary of your inspired coordination and leadership, during which time Casey's Run has raised a phenomenal amount of money for CFB ISD Special Olympics athletes and programs. Equally important, it has motivated countless student-staff volunteers to dedicate their lives in service to others, thanks totally to your tireless efforts and shining example. CFB ISD could not ask for a better person to be in the position you hold, the special students you nurture every single day, the volunteer students and staff you inspire along the way, and the families of both could not be more fortunate than to have you in it with them every single step of the way. The Breckus family is in awe of you, always has been, always will be. I knew you were special because Casey told me so, but when I found out for myself, it was ever apparent what a mentor and role model you were for her. You, in large part, shaped who she was, and I feel you are the gift she gave back to me. Each and every member of the Breckus Frederick extended family thinks the world of you, as in, "You hung the moon." You have no idea the impact you've had on them, especially the young people, and how their lives have been forever changed for knowing you and enriched for having witnessed your dedication and compassion. Has any of it been easy for you? No way. In more ways than I believe, you've even shared with me. Has it always been easy for me? Nope. Would I have had it any other way? No way. We have laughed together, cried harder. I have hurt your feelings, you have forgiven me, we've joked, we've threatened to cancel, we have been irreverent, we have been praised, and we have been criticized. In the end, none of it matters, because our relationship transcends anything petty or difficult, and the mission we share unites us forever and ever. Thank you for everything and more. I am not out of words, just tears. Love, Mel and Candy. P.S. She's not out of words. In honor of your 10 years of valued, above, and beyond dedication, and inspiration to Casey's Run, please accept the enclosed $10,000 donation for Casey's Run 2016. It is our privilege, as CFB ISD Board of Trustees and Superintendent Dr. Bobby Burns, to recognize Mary Mahaffey for her commitment to our staff, students, and CFB community. Mary exemplifies the character, grit, and dedication that the CFB family strives for in educating our students.
Mr. Goode, members of the board, that does conclude our recognitions for this evening.
If you'll allow me, I would like to make some general comments. I would say on behalf of the board, but I never know, you know, we, the board, we agree and disagree sometimes. And so, my com...
Civily.
So whether or not they would concur with my comments, I don't know. But it is an honor to be able to express, I'm going to start with the students, all of our National Merit students. You don't probably realize how important and how honored we, as a board, are of your accomplishments, because it speaks volumes about our public school system and Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. And we are truly honored to every one of you students to be able to say thank you for your academic accomplishments. But, as been stated, they didn't get there by themselves. And to our VIPs, it's always a wonderful opportunity to have you come and be recognized here, because we learn so much more about our educators, your unique qualities beyond the classroom, and the qualities that you bring into the classroom to be able to instill such academic success that you've seen from innovative and creative means and measures that you use. And so, it's always a thrill for us to understand and appreciate that. And the general public doesn't understand always the things that go on in the classroom, and we must admit, we, as trustees, are lacking in that area also. And so, we're not able to experience what it's like to be in your classroom. But it is wonderful, at this point in time, that we can hear about it and listen to potential -- or I shouldn't say, listen to comments from students about their experiences in your classroom. And so, on behalf of the board, I say thank you to everyone. And to the Breckus family, this has been a wonderful experience for many years. And having known Casey and also having known Mary also since she was a high schooler, it's always been a wonderful understanding of how we, as a community, come together through our public education system to take on a project and be able to expand that project year after year after year. It continues to expand and to grow. It continues to serve more and more students. I dare say, Mel, probably from the very beginning, we did not realize the impact that Casey's Run was going to have on our school district after these years. And it is truly wonderful to be able to be in a school district that believes in these programs, that we can undertake to recognize and honor a segment of our student population that many times gets ignored, or they get minimized, and we need to understand, they bring characteristics to the table that we do not always understand. And it's also a wonderful time to be able to reflect upon the accomplishments of everyone. And as Dr. Burns always says, you know, in public education, it's a cheat, high achievement for all students. We do not take exceptions to that in any form or fashion. So to all of you, thank you for all that you have done. We are going to take a short recess, but if you'll allow me, if you would like to address the board and speak in Audience for Guest, if you'd go outside the double doors and fill out the form, give to Ms. Scrivener, and then after we come back in, there will be an opportunity for you to address the board. That being said, at this time, we are going to take a 10-minute recess, and the time is 8:05. This meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees is called back to order at 8:15 PM. The board, at this time, will address Agenda Item 4A, which is Audience for Guest. Audience for Guest is a mechanism that the board uses to receive feedback and input from our constituents. Comments must pertain to public education, issues, and be no longer than three minutes. Our timekeeper, Mr. Shore, will provide a hand signal as the end of your three minutes approaches. Please remember that the board may not discuss or take any action on issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board may defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting, if that's so requested. Ms. Scrivener, are there any more Audience for Guests?
No, sir, there are not.
Very good. As I call your name, would you please come up to the microphone to my left, state your name and address, and then Mr. Shore will hit the magical button that will begin the three minutes. The first person is Mr. John Tepper.
Three minutes, John.
My left.
My name is John Tepper. I'm a homeowner and taxpayer. I reside at 2101 LeMans Drive in Carrollton, Texas. The issue I have to talk about tonight has to do with personnel matters, and I want to name some names, so I'm perfectly comfortable doing this in open session, but I'm not sure that you guys are. So, that's up to you.
I would prefer we not start naming names in open session, as you're...
Okay.
You realize, John.
Yes, I do.
Okay. So we could, if you like, you can make a presentation in public here without mentioning names, but if you want to discuss names, then we can address that.
I can't do, I would have to name specific positions. I can do it without a name, but it would be an identifiable position.
Okay. We would, we really, to be fair, that should be held in close.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. If I may, what I would like to do, we will take that. John, as we get close to the end of the agenda, we have an opportunity at that time for closed session.
Very good.
And we will, we will hear you at that time.
Thank you.
Next is Yvonne Reyes.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Reyes, and I reside at 2118 Sam Houston Boulevard, Carrollton, Texas 75006. And what brings me today here is my son, Emmanuel Reyes. He is a, I'm sorry. Okay, my son Emmanuel Reyes has type 1 diabetes that requires him to have an insulin pump. This continues to put insulin to him. He grew up to Carrollton, going to the Carrollton Farmers Branch schools. Now he is a ninth grader in the Early College High School. The nurses at Carrollton Farmers Branch have cared for him since elementary. I am here today for what happened on April the 8th. He had called, told me in the morning that he had a very low sugar glucose throughout overnight. So what I did the following day is that I tried to call the nurse aide to make her aware of what happened, that way in case he needed attention at school. And to my surprise, I was informed that there was no longer anybody attending the clinic. And then I decided to call the district nurse and ask her, "Why wasn't anybody or anybody aware was informing of that?" I'm sorry. I told her that I was very upset and told her that it was not a correct thing to have no one there at the clinic to attend my son, not just him, but someone else. And told her that the nurse, Brookhaven, was too far for her to go to where my son is or for my son to walk to where the nurse is at Brookhaven College. And so, she proceeded to notify the nurse at Brookhaven, that she might have misunderstood the situation, that she went to his classroom with some police officers, and this scared my son. And at the moment, he said that my son told me that... And at the moment, he said that my son told me that, he got scared because he said, what did I do? And when I picked him up in the afternoon, he just said, Mom, I got scared because I didn't, you know, a lot of things came through my mind, why the nurse and the police officers here looking for me? So I just said, I just told him, I usually do that, remember that I always do that, check up with the nurses, and I just found out that nobody was there, you know, for a while. So I'm just, you know, trying to bring this up, to see if somebody, if not a nurse or a nurse aide, can be there at Early College High School. To see, to me, this is very important because I know he will be attended medically, you know, the right way, if not him or a nurse aide. You know, I know sometimes they do educate some of the staff, but not, not very to the fullest, that they can attend sometimes a diabetic or any other emergencies that someone might have. So this is my main concern, if somebody, you know, they can have a nurse or medical staff there at Early College High School.
Anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and we will direct this to the administration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Tara Herbocic.
Good evening, Mr. Goode, board members, Dr. Byerson's staff. My name is Tara Herbocic. I live at 1406 North Main Street in Carrollton, Texas 75006. I'm here again to provide an update from Council PTA on behalf of our locals within the district. Our locals are finishing up election of new officers for next year, and to assist those new leaders and those returning, Council PTA will host training on May 14th with a mix of PTA officer training and some workshops, workshops such as the use of Square as an online marketplace, the PTA National School of Excellence, and Reflections. Several of our PTAs are wrapping up the year with some fun family engagement events, the ones we know about because they responded to my last-minute request. McCoy Elementary is hosting an In-N-Out Burger Dinner, a spring show, and a scholastic book fair on May 17th. Thompson Elementary is hosting a Cinco de Mayo event tomorrow night. Perry is hosting an end-of-year school party with a barbecue and outdoor activities and games to celebrate their increase in student membership in their PTA. And Good Elementary is hosting a See You Later Gator Party for their students. In our efforts to advocate for each child in the district, we have been communicating and sharing information about the upcoming school board election. We have sent emails to our boards, to our friends, we have asked them to forward and talk to their friends. We have used social media, and we have discussed it with our friends and neighbors, urging everyone to participate in the process for each kid in the district. Our next and last board meeting, Council PTA meeting, is May 11th at 9:45 AM, where everyone is welcome, and the theme is awards and celebration. It's been a great year, and we want to recognize everyone that played a part in that. Thanks, as always, for your continued support of PTA.
Thank you, Tara. That concludes our Audience for Guests. We will now move on to Agenda Item 4B, which is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is the mechanism that board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. And in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes the list of all consent agenda items. The board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any item, action taken on these items on the consent agenda, board members or staff may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. So therefore, at this time, board members, are there any items that you would like to remove from the consent agenda at this time? Hearing none from the, hearing none from the board members, administration, or is there anything you would like to remove? Yes, ma'am?
We would like to remove Agenda Item 4B6.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Board members, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of Item 6. Mr. Shore.
Mr. Goode, I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item 4B6.
I have a motion, seconded by Mr. Matthews. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous, thank you very much. And for clarification, on Item 4B6, there's no further discussion at this time. You will bring this back at a later date, or is it completely removed and this item has died?
This item again until our following school year.
Very good, thank you. We will now move on to Agenda Item 4C, Consider Election of Elementary Principals. Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. Members of the board...
We do have two elementary principal positions to recommend tonight, so we'll present those separately for action.
Very good.
Our first recommendation tonight is Ms. Pam Henderson. Ms. Henderson, would you stand so we can see you? Pam Henderson, you can give her a hand. Ms. Henderson is currently Assistant Principal at Sheffield Elementary, but she's been a math specialist for us, elementary math teacher, and we are proud tonight to recommend to you, Ms. Pam Henderson, for elementary principal position. And incidentally, for the public's knowledge, her assignment will be at Riverchase Elementary for next year.
Very good. Very good. Board members, this is an action item. I got two hands, I didn't see them.
Well, I have a question.
Oh, a question, yes, sir. Mr. Shore.
Dr. Burns, I just wanna make certain I understand this correctly after nine years. We're not actually voting to put Ms. Henderson in a particular position. We're actually voting not to exercise a veto that we could exercise.
That's well stated, Mr. Shore. The assignment is the administration's, and the recommendation for employment would be the veto power of the board. You're absolutely correct.
In fact, there's only one person in this room who we decide the hiring and the firing thereof, am I correct?
Yes, sir, you are.
Now, what do you mean that is? Okay.
With that being said, do I have a motion?
I think Mr. Shore.
I'm afraid now. Mr. Goode, I would make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the administration and the promotion of this individual, Pam Henderson, to be principal.
Very good. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Clyde.
I would second that motion.
Very good. I have a motion and a second. Board members, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Welcome, Ms. Henderson, to Rainwater.
And, Mr. Goode, members of the board, our second elementary principal recommendation tonight is Dr. Jose Ramos. Dr. Ramos, would you please stand? You can give him a hand, too. Dr. Ramos is also currently an Assistant Principal at Sheffield Elementary, and he's been an Assistant Principal and an elementary bilingual teacher for us in CFB. And again, we are deeply pleased that we have such quality Assistant Principals in our ranks to bring you as recommendations for principals. Mr. Ramos's assignment for 2016-2017 would be Janie Stark Elementary.
Board members, this is also an action item. Mr. Matthews.
Well, before I make the motion to accept Dr. Ramos, I would like to give some accolades to Ms. Annie Miller for grooming such fine principal candidates. That being said, I would like to make a motion that we do, in fact, accept the administration's recommendation of Dr. Jose Ramos in the principal position.
I have a motion, second. Mr. Ramos.
No relation.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous. Welcome, Dr. Ramos to Janie Stark. With that being said, we'll move on to Agenda Item 4D, which is compensation for the 2016-2017 school year. Dr. Burns?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Goode. Members of the board, as you can, if you recall from our work study on resource allocation and looking at the 1617 budget, and this board's priorities, as well as the administration's priorities for how we use our resources, and certainly, we believe our people are the most valuable resource we have in our school system. But it has been our practice to bring you back a compensation for consideration, a compensation package for next year for consideration, for multiple reasons. One, we believe it's appropriate for our staff to know what their compensation would be for the next year, as well as we like to get a head start on the competition when we can. So knowing what we're gonna pay for new hires in our compensation package is important to our HR staff. With that said, I will turn it over to, is Ms. Garza gonna start?
Yes.
So, Ms. Garza, will you start with our compensation proposal for 2016-2017?
Yes, I will. Good evening. There have been multiple discussions in regard to the need to provide staff with a pay adjustment for the 2016-2017 school year. Factors to consider in evaluating a pay adjustment include the competitive market, rising TRS active care health costs, rising contribution rates for TRS active members, the impact on employee morale, the impact on a new hire schedule, the impact on the district's ability to recruit highly qualified employees, and the long-term impact on fund balance reserves. We have been sharing market data information with you as it applies to the new hire salary schedule and beginning teacher salary for 2016-17. Attached for your consideration is the new hire salary schedule and the pay schedules for 2016-17. The new hires' schedule was built with beginning teacher pay starting at $50,750, which is an increase of $1,350 from the prior year. Each year, the pay schedules are reviewed and adjusted at the minimum, midpoint, and maximum level. The 2016-17 pay schedules presented include an increase of 2.5% over the prior year. Typically, we adjust the salary schedule slightly below the raise. Ms. Tillman will now discuss budget implications of a potential pay increase.
Thank you. As we began the budget process, we asked for input from multiple groups, including you, the Board of Trustees, at a work study, the superintendent, our District Improvement Council, principals, as well as administrators. And all of these groups indicated that compensation was their number-one priority for 1617. In particular, compensation that was competitive in our market, as well as longevity pay and performance pay continuing on into 1617. As we shared with you at previous meetings, the district is currently not where we want to be in the market in terms of our beginning teacher pay. We are below the average for the area. And this evening, we're asking the board to consider a 3.5% pay increase for all eligible employees. In terms of high-achieving districts that we monitor and chase, we know that HEB, Plano, and Richardson are all above us in terms of beginning teacher pay. HEB is in the number-one spot with a beginning teacher pay of $53,000. Richardson and Plano are both ahead of us as well. Plano is at $50,000, and Richardson is at $49,675. We were at 49.4 this year and are proposing to go up to $50,750. If Richardson and Plano were to do nothing, we would then go ahead of them in terms of our starting pay. However, they have both indicated that they're looking at a 2% to 3% pay increase. So with our proposal, we wouldn't gain ground on anybody, but we also wouldn't lose ground in the area. Each 1% increase adds approximately $1.4 million to our general fund operating budget, so a 3.5% increase would add approximately $4.8 million to our operating budget. In terms of impact on our reserve funds, $4.8 million would take approximately eight days out of our reserve funds. The $4.8 million right now would project to be about a total $15 million deficit for the year. $15 million would take 25 days if we were to actually realize the entire $15 million. Keeping in mind, over the past 10 years, we've only realized three of the 10 for a total of approximately 6.8 that we took out of fund balance over all three of those years. We ended August 2015 with 140 days. Right now, we're trending very well. We adopted an original budget of 6.9 million, and we're going to be well below that level based upon our current utilization. So we probably will end the year around 135 days for the 2015-16 year. In June, we'll be bringing to you our stipend proposal, as well as supplemental pay, our performance pay, and our longevity pay. But this evening, we are asking you to consider adopting the 1617 new hire schedule, our pay schedules, as well as authorizing a 3.5% pay increase for all eligible employees.
Board members, questions, discussion, comments? Mr. Shore.
The first question that I have is, is there an inconsistency with what Ms. Garza said and what you said? Or did I just mishear something? Because I thought Ms. Garza said 2.5, and I thought I heard you say 3.5.
Ms. Garza was referring to our pay schedules that we use for new hires that are not on the teacher pay schedule.
Okay.
So we don't adjust those at the same rate as the raise.
Okay.
Yeah, and if I can add to that, Mr. Shore, just, and I think the board members know this, but for the public, is the time you've been in our school district, that pay is at a higher rate than you coming in new to the district. So we have to have that as a less of a percentage for the new hire schedule.
Okay. Ms. Tillman, you and I have had this dialogue before, but I just wanna confirm that worst-case scenario, you could choke down 115-day fund balance, couldn't you?
Yes, sir.
And that would be the worst-case scenario?
Yes.
Okay. Do you think it will be staff's recommendation, or the administration's recommendation, that if a majority of this board approves what you're requesting today, that you will not be asking to continue the longevity compensation? And will you not be asking for the, I'm gonna call it the ERG?
Performance.
Driven compensation? Stated slightly differently, I wanna make certain, at least one-seventh of us wants to make certain that we keep those other two programs. And so if the administration is saying, if you, if you, if you vote to do what we're requesting tonight, that will mean we won't be asking for those other two matters, that impacts upon me?
Those items will be on the June agenda for board consideration.
But I'm presuming that the board, that the board will be asked to approve them in addition to this?
Yes, sir.
You are correct.
Those numbers are reflected in the $15 million. They're already built in to that estimate.
Okay, so, so that's already built into the worst-case scenario?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Burns, in this matter, I see you as the general manager of this team, and I see four of the seven of us as the owner. May not be a perfect analogy, but that's how I see this. If we approve this, does our general manager feel that he is going to be competitive in terms of signing players?
Yes, sir.
And does our general manager feel that we'll be able to sign players that should get us into the playoffs?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Not only sign them, but then train them up to get us there.
Okay. Because the goal, in my opinion, the goal is to have them receive that performance compensation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Yes, sir. Ms. Tillman, and we've had a conversation about trying to find some ways to bring a greater sense of pay for experience into the district.
And when I look at the schedule here, and it's $50,750 or $271.39 a day for someone with no experience, and I run down 10 years out, and I divide that daily rate by eight hours, now just to do some averaging, in 10 years, somebody's making $1.87 an hour more than they made coming in on the front end of the schedule. That's a challenge, you know, and that would be dividing the daily rate by eight hours, which we know teachers work more than eight hours. The point is, we, I think, need as a district to undertake some serious discussion to say, how can we find ways to value our experienced teachers and keep them here? It's a discussion that's got to go beyond this one tonight, but I would encourage the administration and this board to take a serious look at that, maybe devote some work-study time to it or whatever. But somehow or other, we've got to find a way to find the resources to keep the very best teachers and the experienced teachers here. Because when you look at what a teacher's making after, you know, 10 or 15 or 18 more years in the district, when you look at a lot of other places, especially outside of the boundaries of Texas, this is weak, to say the least. And I just want us to be sure that we're valuing our teachers and valuing experience.
Mr. Schatman, just keep in mind that the schedule you're looking at is the new hire schedule only.
I understand.
So there's a significant difference between someone we hire at 10 years and someone that's been with the district for 10 years.
I understand, and I understand that the averaging of all of that, but even to seek, if HEB has the best teachers according to ERG, how are we poaching those teachers? And we have to be able to bring people in at experienced levels, yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Tillman, you make a good point, and of course, for this district, we've tried to always make sure that the time in your district is more valuable than the time outside the district.
Right.
We believe experience in CFB is more valuable than experience outside, but also, we have to be competitive with the marketplace. So you're absolutely right. We have to watch that and monitor that. But our first priority is to make sure that our teachers here that have been here are compensated first, so.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Shore?
Well, I want to prove that I've watched the video of the kids, because I think Mr. Schatman makes a very poignant comment when he discusses recognizing and acknowledging, and perhaps rewarding, experience. But I do think there is a way that we do that, that it may, careful Frank, I was about to say, it may not be adequate, but for all of you taxpayers out there, arguably, it is adequate. The longevity pay certainly is a way of recognizing and rewarding, if not experience, at least time. And so that's at least a step in that direction.
Yes, and we believe, and we hear it frequently from our staff, that they do appreciate that recognition, and so we are going to bring you back longevity 3.0, because we've had two cycles, and so the next one will have a new package for you to consider as well.
Board members, any other questions, comments regarding the specific agenda item? Hearing none, seeing none. This is an action item. Do I have a motion to accept, I think there's two parts here, starting teacher salary $50,750 and a 3.5% raise for employees?
I make a motion.
No, there are one motion. You'll have a motion. Mr. Matthews?
A move that we accept the starting teacher salary $50,750 and a 3.5% pay increase.
Okay, I have a motion. Second by Mr. Schatman. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Agenda Item 4E, report on CFB, teacher appraisal and growth system. Dr. Burns?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gooden. Members of the board, you know, after we hire them, then we need to be very diligent in their development and their ongoing improvement, and so we're going to talk to you a little bit tonight about our program in regards to teacher growth and evaluation. Ms. Warner?
Thank you, Dr. Burns. So tonight, we are bringing you a report about CFB teacher appraisal and growth system, or TAGS, and we'll be bringing this back to you in June for your consideration. So we currently operate, our teacher evaluation system is called PDOTS, Professional Development and Appraisal System. So we want to start with why, and why are we changing from PDOTS? Well, there have been changes in the state system. PDOTS was put into place about 20 years ago. So over the past 20 years, we've learned quite a bit about teaching and learning, and the world has changed greatly. We think, you know, the iPad came into being in 2010, so we think about how rapidly things have changed. So it's time for an update of our teacher evaluation system. So the state is moving away from PDOTS to TTEST, the Texas Teacher Evaluation and Support System. TTEST was piloted in 2014-15 with a small number of groups, and then that pilot expanded in 15-16 with whole-state implementation planned for 2016-17. With TTEST, there are quite a few local procedural decisions that can be made, or districts can choose to develop a local teacher evaluation system. And after we had TTEST training for administrators in CFB in January and the early part of February, we walked away with two questions after the training, and that was, how could we better align the appraisal and growth language to our goal and guiding objectives and organizational language in CFB, to take local ownership of the teacher appraisal system, and how we could better focus the system for appraisal and growth? So as we started to think about those two questions, we established a TTEST think-tank. We had principals, assistant principals, HR, and educational services, and we began meeting immediately after our training in February. Those think-tank campus administrators representing 10 different campuses with a wide geographic diversity across the district, they collected feedback from their teachers at their respective campuses and then brought it back to our next meeting in March. We then sent a survey out to all of our administrators and then teachers at those campuses represented on our think-tank to get information from all of the stakeholders about a local appraisal system. We met with Edge Euphoria, March 28. That's the company that we currently use to house all of our documents electronically for PDOTS, and so that's one important component that we'd be thinking about if we were choosing to move to a local appraisal system, how we would capture all the information. We developed a draft document for a local appraisal system. It was reviewed and revised by our think-tank April 6, and then we took it to our administrative team April 7. We hosted two teacher feedback meetings on April 20 and 25. We had one scheduled the 3rd on the 26th, but due to inclement weather, we had to cancel that. And we sent a survey out to teachers who attended that information and feedback meeting to give their feedback, and then made additional revisions based on teacher feedback. We sent the TAGS rubric and procedures to campuses on Monday of this week, and then we also held a DIC meeting to ask for their consideration. Part of the commissioner's rules specifies that if the district is going to move from the TTEST system to a locally-developed system, that every campus has to have their campus improvement committee approve that. Our DIC had a presentation, we had some dialogue, they made suggestions for consideration, and then it was unanimously approved by our DIC on Monday. And then campuses will be reporting back if their CICs approve or disapprove by May 25. We're bringing you the information tonight about what our process is and where we are, and then we will bring TAGS to you in June to consider for approval or disapproval of the system per the commissioner's rules. We plan to have administrative training at our Learn More, Achieve More Conference, July 28, and then teachers will be trained at our campus staff development in August. In the fall of 2016, we plan calibration of the instrument by having groups of administrators conduct appraisals together in order to work the document and make revisions based on a committee that will be established, that will be comprised of teachers and administrators, that will be reviewing the regulations and the rubric for refinement next year. The commissioner's rules and state law also specify that in 2017-18, regardless if the district uses TTEST or a local appraisal system, that student outcomes must comprise at least 20% of the teacher's appraisal beginning in 2017-18. There is a lawsuit that has been filed by ATPE against the commissioner regarding this specific piece related to student outcomes as part of teacher appraisal. This was put into place in order for the state of Texas to meet the Nickelby waiver requirements. Now that we've moved away from No Child Left Behind and have adopted ESSA, student outcome is no longer a part of ESSA, and the lawsuit is asking why it is to be considered part of Texas's evaluation system if it's no longer part of the federal requirement. But pending the outcome of that litigation, at this point, we proceed with moving forward with what the current law is. There are four student outcome possibilities that are specified in the commissioner's rules. One is student value-added. That would be using STAR scores to determine the value-add that teacher brings to student. The second option is also a quantitative option, which is our pre-test, post-test. We believe that both of those are problematic in the fact that not all students, it's sitting classrooms that are tested by state testing, nor do we have pre-test and post-test developed for the wide variety of courses we teach, you know, auto mechanics, veterinary tech, jewelry making, you know, art one, too. Those are all kinds of courses that we offer that we do not have those kinds of measures for. The second two options that are allowable for consideration are portfolios, so looking at student portfolio, work over time, and looking at growth there, or what's called student learning objectives, or SLOs. And that's where teachers are determining important outcomes for their content area and looking at student growth over the year in a reduced number of measures related to their content. We would establish a committee. We have requested to be a part of the pilot for SLOs for 2016-17. We'll have 15 teachers at three campuses that pilot that, and then would sit on a committee to help determine what the best growth outcome measure would be for CFB to include in 17-18. And then we would bring that also to the board for approval in the spring of 2017 after our pilot year. So TTEST and CFB TAGS, how are they different and how are they the same? So under TTEST, we have four domains. There's planning, instruction, learning environment, professional practices, and responsibilities. And under CFB TAGS, we created four guiding objectives that are aligned with our organizational objectives, improving student learning, the learning environment, operational efficiency, and community support. And we also talked, one of our questions was how we could bring better focus to the document. Under TTEST, there were 54 different measurements for teacher evaluation in 16 dimensions, and as we reviewed those, we found a great deal of repetition and wanted to reduce that to 37 measures and 12 indicators. The measures that we have established in improving student learning, you can see those listed there, are content knowledge and expertise, driven by data, questioning and classroom discourse, feedback, teacher clarity, real and relevant learning, monitoring and adjusting, considering both what to learn and how to learn, and these are ideas that are aligned with research and best practice, as well as congruent with our organizational language. Under objective two, improving the learning environment, looking at classroom culture and management. Under improving operational efficiency, looking at our standards of professional conduct and professional development. And then lastly, improving community support. Under TTEST, the recommendation is that there are announced and unannounced observations with lesson-length observation, which when we look at our curriculum, we have lessons that could be anywhere from 30 minutes to 120 minutes of time. A pre-conference is recommended prior to all announced observations under TTEST, and a post-conference to be held within 48 hours, and an annual summative conference required. Under CFB TAGS, we are proposing 75 minutes of observation with at least one 45-minute observation period. The feedback that we had from teachers, our current system, PDOTS, requires one 45-minute observation, but it's a one-shot observation, and that this would be something that would allow growth over time to be viewed in the observation. The 45-minute observation currently under PDOTS is scheduled in a two-week window. We are proposing that we schedule that observation by date and time with teacher, so that they are fully aware of the date and time, and they can plan and prepare accordingly, because we want teachers to feel like they're secure and that it's their best effort, that they know that that time is there. We'll have a goal-setting conference at the beginning of the year, and then an optional pre-conference at the request of appraiser or teacher. We have campuses that have different traditions and practices in place, and wanted to respect the option for the campus decision-making there. We would require a post-conference within five days. Currently, under PDOTS, there's a 10-day window for teachers to get feedback. We think we need to shorten that, but also knowing that it's a new instrument, so allowing a week, five business days, for the administrator to complete the documents and return them to the teacher. And then the summative annual conference would be scheduled, and if the teacher wishes to waive that, they would have the right to do that. If they've had their post-conference, the information hasn't changed in their summative conference, and they, you know, would prefer the time back to them, that they would have the option to do that. The administrator cannot waive it, only the teacher. Under TTEST, there are five teacher performance indicators, distinguished, accomplished, proficient, developing, and improvement needed. And the goal in designing TTEST was that currently, those teachers under PDOTS who are receiving exceeds indicators, the exceeds expectations indicators, that those would be aligned with proficient under the new TTEST system. As we reviewed that, we struggled finding the distinction between distinguished and accomplished, and we also thought that the language of proficient had a negative connotation, and so as part of our survey data, we preferred the term effective instead of proficient. So we're proposing four categories, distinguished and accomplished being combined into an accomplished, effective, developing, and improvement needed. Under TTEST, the belief is that there's no formalized teacher and needs of assistance plan, because all teachers are on a growth plan, and our survey data and our recommendations from HR were that we do have a formalized structure for a teacher in needs of assistance. We also wish to continue for formal appraisal, our current practice of less-than-annual appraisal for teachers who meet certain criteria, that are on a two-year-term contract, who've been at their campus for more than a year, and who've had effective indicators in their previous appraisal. So TTEST and TAGS, how are they similar? We really took the language of TTEST and made minor adjustments based on our organizational language. So the TTEST was developed with a lot of research, Danielson's, Marzano's work, and so we took those indicators, we looked for redundancy, what could be eliminated, aligned them under our guiding objectives, and then made minor tweaks in language to put them more aligned with our organizational language. Just like with TTEST, we'll have a teacher goal-setting at the beginning of the year. The currently is the same structure under PDOTS. We believe we'll be focused on growth and improvement, how we can all be getting better every day. Teachers will not receive a comprehensive rating, but will receive feedback for each objective. So I could be accomplished in objective one, effective in objective two, accomplished in objective three, effective in objective four, but I would not have an overall, you are an effective teacher. There will be one focused area of strength and refinement, and then the student outcome component added in 17-18 for both TTEST and TAGS. We will have a face-to-face teacher orientation prior to observation, so that... so that teachers can have questions answered as needed. There will be no observation conducted in the first three weeks of school as teachers are establishing classroom routines and procedures. Unlike P-DOS, both T-Test and TAGS will allow for observation at any time after the three-week window. In P-DOS, there were blackout dates where observations could not occur, but we know every minute that we have with students is important and should be used for instruction. So, there shouldn't be days that are not available to observe classroom instruction. The appraisal system is formative in nature, so it's really about growth and improvement over time. And teachers have the option to have a second appraisal with a written request within 10 days of receipt of any written documentation that impacts their appraisal, and that's consistent with P-DOS now. We have put, you know, quite a bit of effort and time and believe that we have an instrument, the feedback that we've gotten from the DIC is that it respects teachers, the craft of teachers, and will be focused on growth and alignment. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Board members, any questions for Ms. Warnock? Mr. Matthews?
So, does that mean a teacher could be evaluated on the day before Christmas break?
Technically, that means that, yes, they could be evaluated the day before Christmas break.
Or any other major holiday that comes up?
And any other major holiday that comes up? The likelihood that that would happen, I think, is unlikely with the activities that are busy at that time, or final exams at our secondary campuses. But the idea that instruction is important and every minute counts is embedded in both T-Test and TAGS.
And that was five school days for the post-conference to take place?
Correct. Five business days. Mr. Shore?
If we implement this, who will have access to the rating the teacher?
Sure. The appraiser and the teacher. And then, a copy is sent to HR at the conclusion of the school year, and that is in the teacher's personnel file. When teachers move districts, they'll often, you know, request a copy of their most recent appraisal to take to their new district. So, but that's who would have access to it.
If I could add, Ms. Shore, those are still confidential under law, their evaluation.
So, if a parent were considering having their child enrolled in X Elementary, they would not know if the teacher of the class is accomplished, developing, or whatever?
Correct.
Other questions?
Mr. Good, if I can add, and Ms. Warnock touched on it, but, you know, in the Commissioner's Rule, and of course, with coming out with this evaluation system and having schools have discretion, for the governance piece, your role is much like the personnel piece. Veto and say yes or no, and then, we'll keep scrubbing and bring you back one maybe later if this one is not the one that we get approval on. But we do feel like that our staff deserves an appraisal system that's aligned with our structure, our organizational culture and our values. And they deserve it. Even if it's a little more work on our part, they deserve the best system that we can have for them. And so, that's why we've chosen to explore a different one from the state. We don't believe one size fits all from the state perspective, so.
Mr. Shackman?
Ms. Warnock, kudos for First Look making our culture wrap around an evaluation system. In terms of the amount of time in the P-DOS system versus our new, it looks like we're, it's going to be a little more time-consuming. Do we have any idea how much more it's going to put on our administrators?
Well, we currently have a leveraged leadership and also just informal walkthrough. So, we believe that it will be congruent with time that's already spent in classrooms with informal walkthroughs comprising the additional 30 minutes. I also would want to add that we're also refining our principal and administrator evaluation to also be aligned, and that over the next three years, we'll be rethinking all of our evaluation instruments to be aligned with our guiding objectives, our organizational language, and this concept of ongoing growth and feedback.
If there's no other questions, Ms. Warnock, thank you for the report. At this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item 4F, which is Report on CFB Technology Plan.
Mr. Good, members of the board, I know we've talked a lot in the past couple of years, for sure, about technology, and it's important. So, we thought we'd give you an update and a report on it. Ms. Warnock, agree to go straight to Ms. Webb?
We are going to turn it over right to Ms. Webb.
Ms. Webb, you're up.
All right. Listening to the radio while driving to work one day this week, the radio host asked listeners to respond to this question. What is the best advice your mom ever gave you? Well, a listener called in with this response. Learn to type and take shorthand, and you will never be without a job. Well, perhaps that was good advice a few years ago, but with the explosion of technology, that advice may need to be amended. Today, it is imperative that our students not only be exposed, but be engaged with technology to ensure success for the 21st century. As I've shared in previous presentations, when we discuss our technology plans, three pillars guide our thinking: access, security, and mobility. The graphic depicts these three on an arrow as they are ever-changing and moving forward. In 2013, the board endorsed a four-year technology plan. Tonight, I'd like to give you a quick update on that plan. The discussion regarding access in 2013 was different from the discussions regarding access in 2016 and beyond. In 2013, desktop computers, computer labs, and projection were the hallmarks of access. Today, we know that computer labs are still valuable, but they afford limited and inconsistent opportunities for students to have rich digital experiences. The check marks, though, indicate that these items have been completed from that technology plan. And with an eye on the future of technology, we also had wireless capability identified for enhancement, and that, too, is in process. We also have to turn our attention to security with all these changes. Cyber intruders and bad actors require that security be a focal point of any technology plan. To ensure a safe environment, the aging district network operations center electronics were upgraded as indicated by the check mark. Campus network electronics are reaching end-of-life support. Tonight, you approved funding to begin the process to upgrade these infrastructures, and we thank you. The item can now have a partial check mark. And although telephony and messaging still need to be upgraded, these items are going to be deferred to a later time. Our discussions surrounding mobile devices have also changed since the first discussions in 2013. At that time, the thinking was to encourage students to bring their own devices, or BYOD. And the district would supplement with district-owned mobile devices. But over time, new learning, research, and experience are leading us in a different direction. BYOD has limitations. Devices that students bring may be too old to handle the content. They may not be current operating systems, or they just may not be set up properly. Taking time to resolve these individual issues takes time away from the learning. Providing district-owned mobile devices allows the district to manage the devices and provide the technical support as needed. In June, we will bring forward a proposal to purchase district-owned mobile devices for your consideration. To ensure successful implementation, we will also simultaneously continue to upgrade campus network operations and wireless capabilities as we increase the number of district-owned mobile devices. In closing, I would like to read an excerpt from an article titled, "Are Your Students Really Tech-ing?", by Adrian Smith, an educational technology specialist from Pearland ISD. "Mr. Westbrook is an enthusiastic teacher known for being willing to try new things, and he identifies himself as an advanced technology innovator. He is a good teacher, and his students like him. He reports using a document camera and projector on a daily basis to deliver instruction and considers his use of technology effective. When I first came to Mr. Westbrook's classroom, he introduced me to his students as a new technology specialist. Immediately, a student asked, 'Why can't we use technology in here more often?'" "Mr. Westbrook laughed and said, 'We use technology in here every day.'" "No, not we, you." "You use technology in here every day with your PowerPoint," said the student, "but we don't get to use it." Many teachers, like Mr. Westbrook, use technology to deliver instruction, and that is a great start. But that is not necessarily the perspective of our students. Technology integration is a call to action. It's a call for active use by students. It's called to be used as a tool to enhance learning with a balance between instruction and student creativity. To do this, we must make technology available to students on a consistent basis. At the heart of every effective technology integration, technology offers opportunities to be more actively involved in the learning experience." Thank you, Ms. Warnock.
That concludes our report. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board members, any questions? Seeing none. Thank you for the presentation and report. Agenda Item 4G, which is Update on Standing Board Committees. This is in here for two purposes. That is, to identify the two committees. Mr. Shore, your committee for Standards Professional Practice Update is discharged of its responsibilities. And what will probably happen, there will probably be a work-study session in the fall to go back through this. And, Mr. Fleming, your committee on Term Limits is also discharged of its responsibilities because it's understood that the next legislative session, most likely, will have a discussion on term limits. That being said, thank you for the time you put into those committees. And with that, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 5, which is Comments from Board Members. That is, comments regarding posted agenda items. Board members, any comments regarding posted agenda items? I see no responses. Therefore, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 6. First, Dr. Burns, is there anything for closed session?
No, sir, except for the audience for guests.
Okay, I'll come back to that. I just want to make sure if there's... Therefore, that will restrict what I'm going to read or say. We will have a closed meeting. It's authorized under Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, which is Personnel Matters, that relate to Agenda Item 4A, specifically, audience for guest, Mr. John Tepper's request to speak to the board. With that, what I would like to do, that is only about a three-minute presentation. It would be easier for you to take a break, go to restrooms or whatever, for three minutes. And then, after that, we will come back in here and conclude our meeting. Or would...
That's good.
That's probably the most appropriate. So, if you would vacate the location here, and in about five minutes, you'll be asked to come back in.
We're going to stay here, but we can take a quick break. They're going to, we got to...
It's easier for us to just do it here.
Yeah, and we got to close everything.
Yeah. Has everyone returned? Very good. Board members, we have nothing for Agenda Item 7 since we did not discuss any matters in closed session, which required our attention. Therefore, Agenda Item 8, by my determination, we have reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at 9:23 PM. Thank you.